District number 531 on October 6th, 2025 at 6:02. Attendance roll call, please.
Kelly?
Here.
Alicia?
Here.
David?
Here.
Jeremy?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Nadia?
Here.
And Lisa is absent.
Vision Byron Public Schools, community of learners committed to making the world a better place. Mission is to learn, share, innovate, inspire. Priorities are personalized learning in the pursuit of academic excellence. Inspire students and staff to develop their character, share their talent, and apply their learning, and maintain excellence in resource management. Do we have any questions or discussion on the agenda as presented?
No, I just want to let everyone know that there's a Tom Shipboard meeting tonight that Nate and I are going to, so I will leave at 6:45 if you see me departing. That's why I'm here.
Sounds good. Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All approve. Agenda is approved. We will invite Malia up to have our high school presentation.
Good evening, everybody.
Thanks for having me.
So, the presentation that I decided to share with you was, what would you, what do I think you would want to hear about related to the high school? If some of you maybe don't have children up at the high school yet, what would be some things you might want to know a little bit about our high school? So, I asked some students, if you were new board members, what would think, what would the things you would want to know about? So, they gave me a few ideas, and then what I did was turn them into questions, went back to their lunch tables and asked them for information. So, that's what this presentation is about, just to have you learn a little bit more about the high school. So, our first question that I asked students was, what courses offered at BHS are preparing you for your future? And then the next slide, thank you. Were just some quotes from kids. So, I highlighted some of the classes they talked about. Having a wide variety of courses compared to other high schools that are nearby. Post-high school planning is a graduation requirement that all of our juniors have to take. We have some personal finance that will be a new graduation requirement eventually as seniors. And then, as you kind of look around, you can see we offer some other courses that they mentioned there, some medical classes such as AP Bio, Anatomy, and Phys. Any of our kids that are maybe in the medical field may have taken some of those courses. We do offer a firefighter one and two course which runs every other year, and so this was the off year, so kids were looking forward to entering into our, the next year that they can register for that. Lots of kids talked about hands-on experiences such as our food truck as an awesome life experience when you're trying, and that food truck class has both the food preparation piece and then the business piece of running their own business. There's some real-life skills in shop classes where they're changing oil, patching walls, they're learning all sorts of things, they're building projects. Again, in nutrition and wellness, learning a lot about what they can do when they're on their own, if they were swapping out foods and making different recipes. And then, just basically having lots of electives they liked because they might take a real heavy load of academics, maybe rigorous courses, and then in the daytime maybe have an art class for relaxation purposes. And then, that last one, they mentioned all the college credit offerings that we have at Byron High School, and that we're, they're feel pretty lucky to have a lot of my staff who are willing to go out and get the additional requirements needed so that they can teach those college-level courses. You can go to the next one. At BHS, we offer our students AP classes, so we have four AP classes that we offer. We also have some project lead-the-way courses, which all of those give kids a chance to take certifications and tests that they could take elsewhere into colleges if they're looking at going on to colleges afterwards. They have some articulated college credits, and those are maybe for more two-year schools potentially, some ag classes, business classes. Sometimes, some of those articulated college credits can go into four-year schools also. And currently, we offer 46 college credits at the high school. So, our kids can stay in-house and get 46 college credits here at Byron High School. You may not have seen this graphic before, but when our kids register, we have this graphic which helps kids pick pathways when they're trying to register for courses. Maybe it's something that they start looking at, you know, I'm really into technology, engineering, and manufacturing, so what courses are offered in that pathway? It's just an opportunity to help connect coursework and passions for our kids as they're, you know, as a 14-year-old ninth grader, it's kind of hard to decide what it is you want to do in high school. But these help them kind of decide, maybe, maybe working in the shop is not where I'm best suited, maybe I'm more suited in Health and Human Services. So, then, kind of collecting those courses and pathways helps kids decide what's best for them. This is a video for you to watch.
Oh, dear.
Oh, no. Yay. Oh, no. Do I my owner?
Let me think. You would have to log into my...
Well, I had access to it today, so let me see if I have access.
To share with me?
I did have. Bless you.
Because I played through it to make sure.
I know.
So, let me add you quick.
Anyways, while we're getting the video ready, this is a video that our Dean of Students, Kirby Van De Walker, has worked on kind of creating what's called the bear tracks, and he's been putting together videos in electives and core courses, and here's one that I thought would fit well for this, if it goes. Maybe not.
Just give me full access, let me put it aside so. Can I play it for my? Yeah, can you screenshot?
High school biology classes went down to lab today, and he invited me to come check it out. Let's go take a look. Go. I'm here in high school biology with Mr. Felton. We got a lab going on. What's the purpose?
So, the purpose of this lab is to identify whether certain food items have carbohydrates, proteins, or lipids in them. The other purpose of it is to determine how we test and what a positive test result would look like for those food items.
After today's lab and the unit that you guys are following, what can students expect to be able to do outside of school with this information?
Well, so, when students are told that certain foods have proteins in them, how they know how those tests were done and how researchers came up with, yes, this has proteins, yes, this has lipids in it, or carbohydrates in it?
I really like doing labs and science because it's really fun, get off the feed, not taking notes on PowerPoints. Felton does a great job explaining them and giving us rules and jobs, keeping our memory safe.
The thing I like about doing labs and science classes is that we get to take the stuff that we're learning and like apply it to like kind of real-world stuff that we can see in like everyday life. And I, like, I'm a visual learner, so seeing everything actually happen makes it a lot easier for me to process like and retain it by memory.
Yeah, like just reading it in like in a textbook or doing worksheets, you can't exactly picture what is going on in the chemical process. So, when you're actually seeing the chemical reactions and the colors change, you're kind of getting an idea of what's going on with those molecules and those macromolecules.
I think it's more fun, too.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for inviting me into your classroom today. Another quality lesson done by Mr. Felton here in biology.
Thank you for coming. Always glad to have you stop in. Always glad to have you take a look around and see what we are doing.
Okay. Well, sorry about the viewing purpose, but I think we're set for the next video which will show up here after the culture and climate slide. When the kids talked, you can flip it, when the kids talked about what it was that they thought was best about Byron High School, they talked a lot about staff, and you're going to notice that that's what I started to highlight, was every little box had something related to staff members. Staff members listening to problems, helping kids feel heard, taking good care of you and study skills. Our flex Fridays are days when we have a lot smaller teacher-to-student ratio, and it's really a great opportunity for kids to get in with teachers where they maybe feel like there's a lot going on in a classroom. It's a lot easier for them to have an opportunity to have more teacher time. Kids talked a lot about our office staff and our custodian Greg being great people to be around throughout the day. It wasn't just about teaching staff, it wasn't just about principles either, as we were listed, Mr. Van De Walker and I. Just how you greet kids and how you welcome them into the building, trying to make sure that they're there, or that you're around and you, they know that you're excited to see them. We do get dressed up on dress-up days, we do participate in a lot of activities for them with the hopes that they're having a great time while they're here at school. There was another great comment about that they make this the best high school in the area because this kid had transferred a few times, and so he had mentioned like the other people at his lunch table hadn't been to other high schools, and he was quite clear that this was the most welcoming place, that he had been in his stop of high schools. And so, that was pretty awesome to hear, as it's, as high school can be a tough time for kids. So, from that would be our homecoming video that Mr. Van De Walker made. So, that kind of, I know, it is, it is a really nice video. Kind of gives a really good picture of what that week looks like for most kids at the high school. The last question I ask kids are, what are some of the best things they like about being at the high school? Here, they talk about staff quite a bit again, and teachers making them feel heard and, and that we do have a lot of athletics and activities that people can be involved in. They liked the lunch food. Chef Jay makes the best meals, they liked that, and of course, they were eating lunch, so that made sense. They feel safe there, their friends have been there, staff make them feel seen from the moment you walk in the door, and other staff say good morning to you, the entire staff make it fun to go to school here. Our office decorates for every holiday, and some just made up holidays and activities that the school are having just to bring some fun into what we do at the high school. And then, the last slide was really just some random photos I took from that week of homecoming, and we, and you can see that they, the staff can have a good time with kids, but at the same time, they really care a lot about our, our students, and I think our kids are really fortunate to be at the high school with people that genuinely care about them and want them to go out and do great things. So, if I could say anything, it'd be a thank you for employing great staff for me at the high school. They helped me do an amazing job with kids, but the kids themselves respond really well to our staff, and overall, it's a really great place to send your kids, and it's a really great place to work. And Mr. Van De Walker is quite talented at his videography skills, putting together his videos, so that's been fun for kids to see, as he's gone into multiple different classes to kind of highlight what kids are doing day in and day out. So, that's what I have. Questions that you might have for me about the high school?
I would just say thank you, that was really fun to watch. After our last round of cuts, one of the things we talked about is making sure we're checking in on staff, including yourself, and doing what we can to take care of you with the resources we have. You don't have to answer this right now, but please think about that, like what we as board members can do to best support you and what else.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. You're doing a really good job.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're great kids, right? And they all deserve to have an amazing high school opportunity, whether we're in budget cuts or not, so helping them have a good experience so that their years there are memorable is important, too. So, thank you, though. I appreciate that. Any other questions you might have for me or anything else?
I would just say kudos, you've led us to where we are, and I know you've had a change in staff at, in your office.
Yeah.
And it's always nervous when you come to change, but it's nice to see that Kirby brings a different set of skills and we're able to tell these stories, and in a fun and unique way that people can relate to. So, yeah, that's, that's awesome to see and hopefully you'll continue.
I'll tell him that, he, he does do a really great job, and he takes a lot of pride in that, and he really looks forward to seeing the kids in the classrooms doing those things, so it's, he has a lot of fun with it, too. I'll let him know that.
Does he make the football game playlist, too?
He does.
Fire, please tell him.
He does, and he loves that also, so I will tell him that also. Yes, he will like that.
Really cool.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Liam.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to our administrative reports, are there any questions or discussion on any of the reports as presented by those members of our staff? If not, we move on to discussion items. Our reports set a special meeting date to adopt the resolution canvassing results.
So, you had done this at the last board meeting, but since then, we, we added a few more people that we need to help us.
That's the next one.
Oh, sorry, that's the next one?
That's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. The first one is the special meeting date, yeah. So, I should have pulled up my calendar. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. I just want to make sure we get this one.
Yeah, this is super important. So, Election Day, and excuse my, excuse my items, but Election Day, I should do this, is obviously on the 4th, and then we have until the 14th, is that right?
Cambassing would start the 7th to the 14th, so we have to, we'll get the abstract of votes cast from the county sometime after the 4th. Typically, it's closer to the 7th or the next week, so then we need to set a date to canvas those results. It's usually a five-minute meeting. You're just approving or accepting that canvas of votes.
And obviously, we would have a, well, nevermind. So, our board meeting happens too late because we have to obviously draw the board, but like Ann said, it's a pretty, the thing that takes the longest is waiting really for you all to sit in your chairs and start to meet.
Okay. Would it be cutting it too close date-wise and time-wise for you and Nate to do it on Monday, the 10th, after the parent negotiations?
Could be. The, the one issue is that is getting that, that abstract from the county is, it's possible, but for, for better consistency, I would say if we could look at something on the 12th, or sorry, we can't, we can't have a meeting on the 11th because it's Veterans Day, but we could do the 12th, 13th, or the 14th are really the best ones.
And we just need 4. I can make it to the 12th and 13th.
And it can also be like an early morning, you know, morning 1, 2.
As of now, I'm good. Any of those?
2. It just depends on the time of the day, everything in, evening, or, yeah. Morning. Or morning. In school would be good.
I could do morning on the 14th if that's for people.
What about, what does the morning of the 13th look like?
Are there mornings?
Yeah, I could do, actually, I can't do this much. I could do not.
As long as I can get everybody on the bus, good.
I cannot be here in the morning of the 15th.
How about the afternoon of the 13th, then?
Yes, I can be there after 2:30.
Good for me? No. Carrie, how about you?
Um, I honestly, I would have to say maybe, I, I mean, it's only a five-minute meeting.
Yeah, it's quick, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of course you can. Yeah. He could sentence you.
Nadia, how about you?
After 3:00 PM.
After 3:00? Okay. Um, let me, let me sit here quick. What if we did evening on the, on the 13th, 6 o'clock?
Right. I can do anything. I will, I'll have to signal on that just because with, okay. But 3, otherwise, any other time in the day I can make it. After 5:00, it's tricky.
Number 13, 6:00 PM, is what we're thinking?
Yeah.
Are there at least four of us that can make that?
I think there's five.
Lisa, okay. Okay, so it's the 13th, correct?
Yes.
13th at 6:00.
Okay.
Do we have to make a motion to approve that?
No, we just set the date.
Yeah, we just set that one. Thanks for asking.
Do you want, do you want to set a Zoom invitation for that? Because I mean, it's still like a 10, I just probably be on.
Yeah, we could.
I'll either accept it or...
We could do a virtual one.
Good idea, in case we need a poll.
Yeah, yeah. Because I'd like to be there, I just want.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the referendum update.
Hold on, we have to do the, or no, we don't have to do the, that's later, sorry.
I have an agenda.
We could just say hi.
I should just pay attention to the agenda.
Things going over here.
You tell them.
Okay. The biggest referendum update is just the community meetings, so as Alicia shared in a little bit, she and I will be headed to the Salem Town Hall, and then again, we have the school board community presentations document, so that I've shared with you all. Over the next couple of weeks, we basically have at least two meetings every single week from now until Election Day. So, if you've signed up, please make sure that you review that just so that it's on your calendars. And just again, if there's any opportunities for you to volunteer and provide support for those folks that are out there talking about the referendum, please lend, even if it's just a five or a 10-minute opportunity of your time, like your, just your mere presence makes a difference and shows that we're, we're all vacuumed together. So, this week, there's going to be, we're starting kind of a weekly video series, so Mr. Radke is going to be the video star, I was the video star last week, lucky for humanity. And then, we're, we're recording a few others this week with elementary teachers. Backpack flyers are going to start getting dropped in backpacks, maybe as soon as this Friday, and then in about two or three weeks, our booklet brochure, which is about 15 pager, will end up in everybody's mailboxes, and the final edition of that ends up, I'll approve it on Wednesday, and then it goes to the print shop that same day. So, we're nearing the end, but now it's just kind of continue to push out the message, and again, if you see things that are on the district's social media, please feel free to share it on your own so that people get, get the word out. The last thing that we settled up on was a Facebook Live time. We'll start sending it out, it will be on the 16th, which is a Thursday in the evening, and then we'll see if that is more helpful or more of a dumpster fire, and if it's more helpful, I'll probably host another one the week before the referendum, and if it's more of a dumpster fire, we'll, we'll reevaluate and see what we need to do, so.
Do we, can we jump ahead to the resolution so that we're all on attendance for that and then go back to reviewing the policies?
Sure. You don't need my approval, sorry. I get so excited.
I was looking at AI.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Nobody says what I got to say.
Yeah, let's go ahead and read the resolution. So, we are, everybody that is here is in attendance for that. Let's see. Are we starting it? Be it resolved on page 2?
I just want to clarify, it looks like we have a backup head judge, correct?
So, we added, so she was, she was a judge already, but she's also a head judge, so we added her as a co-head judge, and it meant that anything happens with Sharon.
Great.
And then, we did also add another, the gentleman right before my name there has been added as an addition, and so anytime you make an addition, you have to.
Got it.
Get a resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District 531, Minnesota, Byron, I'm sorry, Byron Public Schools as follows. It is hereby found, determined, and declared as follows, the following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as judges of election for the school board, the school district's special election on November 4th, 2025, to act as such at the polling place listed below. Do I want to read all the names? Okay. The election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots cast, and submit the results to the board for canvas in the manner provided for other school district elections. The following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as absentee ballot board members for the school district's special election on November 4th, 2025, to act as such at the absentee voting location listed below. The following individuals, of each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby designated to deliver absentee ballots to hospital patients and residents of healthcare facilities in accordance with Minnesota Statute Section 203B.11, subdivision 1, for the school district's special election on November 4th, 2025.
Okay.
All right. Would entertain a motion to take action on this resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution appointing election judges and absentees out of board members.
So, Malia?
Motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Yep. Alicia?
Yay.
David?
Yay.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Nadia?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution's approved. We'll dive into some policies, start with 209, and as Nate had sent, there's a number of them, but there are no suggested changes as of right now. So, 209, are there any questions or discussion on this one? Moving on to 306, the administrative code of ethics. Questions or discussion on policy 306? Policy 512, school-sponsored student publications and activities.
Under 2B, I was wondering if we just wanted to say three school days instead of three days, just to give clarity.
Okay, so...
To set expectations, yeah. I don't know if that matters, but...
I feel like somewhere in the policy book, it had said like whenever it's considered days, it excludes... I feel like somewhere in the policy book, it had said like whenever it's considered days, it excludes Saturdays and Sundays and holidays, but.
That makes sense.
Any other questions or discussion? Moving on to.
Actually, sorry, um, 512, I also thought under three, uh, section three. It, um, it says normal or perverted in parentheses and I just felt like that was unnecessary and hard to define, very subjective. And just thought we should consider removing.
Wait, do you know which number?
It was section 3D.
3D, okay, thank you.
Where it says a sexual conduct such as in an sexual act's normal or perverted. I just think it's unnecessary.
So you're saying just straight.
Just actually, yeah, that's, for my preference. I feel like who's to say? I don't know how you guys feel about it, but it seemed unnecessary to me.
So is that a working document at your hand, Anne?
Yeah, I can, I can redline it right now. And then it would go to the next meeting for second reading approval.
As I would read it, that parenthesis doesn't necessar- the, the, the topics inside of the parenthesis don't necessarily add any, I mean, to Alicia's point. It doesn't either add or exclude anything that isn't already in the, so. It's not, it's not performing a function as most things in parentheses.
Yeah, that's our thought. It could potentially cause confusion or room for debate, I feel like.
Okay, make a note as, as that and then.
If you guys have further discussion at the next meeting.
Yep. Thank you. I'm sure.
I've been to.
Do not resuscitate.
Um, I do know that, um, this, this DNR, DNI thing, the part that is striking or jarring to most people is that generally speaking, it's during the school day and on school property, school officials do not respect those orders. And a lot of times that can be a little surprising because it's like, well, how, how can we do this? The, the main issue just result is resulting from a logistical idea, right? So if you have your 800 kids at the high school and there's one that happens to go into some type of emergency arrest or of some sort, we want the staff to be able to react and provide life-saving intervention as they can. Um, and so having it, having, uh, and most schools have this order in place, at least everyone I know of, um, because in that moment, we don't want our staff to, before they provide any kind of intervention to be like, oh, Sean's passed out on the floor. Can somebody check through Sean's file to see if he has a, a do not resuscitate? It's just in, in all, in most practical matters, it really just slows down things that we wouldn't be wanting to do. Um, so this, this particular policy does create a little bit of, um, consternation at times with the public because they're saying, well, this individual has sought the expertise of their legal team and whatnot. Um, what I have seen, especially at one of, uh, one of the buildings I worked with, we did have a student that had this and they're what, um, they, they weren't really part of the general population of the school. And the individ- most school students that would have a thing like this and still be attending public school, their needs are probably pronounced and specific enough where if they are going to attend general education classes, it's not going to be very many and they're likely going to have an assistant or a number of assistants with them. Um, and so even though in the building where I had a student like this, they had like a tag on them that identified that this was a, a DNR, DNI student. And that if you were going to perform, you know, you had to get permission from the administration ahead of time. So anyway, that's the, that's kind of, cause this one is a, is a strange policy cause it kind of goes contrary to what we've always been led to believe, but.
Yeah, so my concern is that, well, I just, as a healthcare provider, I think we need to respect people's wishes and respect families' wishes, so this immediately may put my capital.
Yeah.
Um, I also concerned that if we are going to make exceptions, but we have this policy that says we resuscitate everybody, like does that, that we're not following the policy? I think we should make exceptions. I think exactly what you described is probably, it's a rare situation.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I absolutely think we need to be following the family and students' wishes in a situation like this. And respect their dignity and their choices. And so I'm, I'm concerned that this, and maybe that's what we need to speak to medical council about, maybe you already have. Like, can we make an exception if we have this policy in place?
Well, all, well, at least every district I'm familiar with already has this policy in place. And the, the way you get around it is, and it has an exemption down below for if the care team that, that works with the student wants the district to honor this.
Yeah.
Then, then they make an emergency health plan that is very different. And so for example, like if, if I was a student like that and you were a parent that was attached to me all the time, that if there was some type of issue with me, you would be there to, to provide the reassurance to any staff that might not be familiar with my situation, to tell them, well, this, these are the wishes and the school has signed off on it. Um, and that we, and that we proceed according to the wishes.
And I didn't see that in the policy that, that exceptions can be made. Do we need to add that?
Um, I think this F. Hold on, I'm sorry, hold on. Yeah, I think I could ask a few more questions. Um, I mostly would default to what's written just because this is passed through untold numbers of legal experts already. And the prac- and I do honor the, anybody's right to do whatever the heck they want with their life. At the end of the day, the, the practical nature of it is when we're in charge of somebody's health.
I get it.
Yeah, I know, that part I do. So I can absolutely ask a couple of other questions if there's any other ideas there that potentially provides an out. Um, but like I said, I, I do remember we had that one student, um, and I could ask, I could ask a couple of people specifically from that district. Like what, what was the process of the policy that guy did that decision to be made?
I think my question would be, if we did make an exception, would we, do we need to change the policy to make an exception? Or can we just make an exception?
Yeah, I think we'd have to add it just because I thought that E and F provided a way to say that if folks signed off on stuff, so you, you see how it says, not withstand, I mean, E, you probably could make a case that says notwithstanding this policy,
Yeah.
these teams can develop an individualized medical emergency care plans. And so I, you know, as I'm reading E here in the wild with you, that to me probably provides enough leeway to where you could, but, but it's, it doesn't, it's worth at least asking a couple of the districts what they do. And if E really does do what we're claiming the district to.
Thanks.
So that would be somebody that would be identified by a, a care professional or?
No, because we, that would be disclosing their.
That's, that's what I was thinking, yeah. Cause that, I mean, I, I see the, the respecting of, you know, respecting the person's wishes. I just would, um, I think that would be hard if the person's not identified, right? And we don't want to do that. It'd be hard to say, well, let's check first and lose that precious time.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, and that's really the intent behind is that. So that if a family, if a family really feels strongly enough about the do not resuscitate order, they, I mean, what really ends up happening at the school level is like, well, we aren't the right setting for your child. Because if you are asking us to not save their lives in a situation like that, it's just not something we can do. So. And it's not that we don't want the kid around, it's just practical, it's just the practicality of it. Thank you.
Moving on to 713, student activity accounting. No changes, just manual policy review. Uh, 704 is development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset accounting system. I'm going to trust that Sean knows this verbatim.
Not quite verbatim, but I do know that we have a, let's see what picks off this.
He's adding it to his tattoo collection.
Yes, yes.
All right. Uh, policy 705, investments. Again, just a first reading and any comments or discussion on this one? And finally, policy 701, establishment and adoption of school district budget. Which we have talked about recently as well. No changes there. Any discussion? Okay. That's our first reading of those policies. So that brings us to item number eight, a recap of the listening session.
We had one person.
Okay.
Um, and really the discussion was around why the board chose to make the decision to cut middle school sports specifically relating to boys soccer. Uh, where there was 14 seventh grade boys that got cut. Um, they all did get the opportunity to play for the youth soccer association, um, but the number of games were much fewer, a lot more travel was required. Um, there was also some fees that the soccer association picked up themselves. Um, but may not be something that they can sustain for very long either. Um, so it was really more of asking us to relook into middle school sports and making sure that we are giving everyone a fair opportunity across the board.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That brings us to a final item on the agenda, adjournment.
Make motion to adjourn.
Say it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right.
Aye.